Council Agenda, Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting of July 9th, 2024. Introduction, Posting of Notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 20th, 2023, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the New York Star Ledger on December 6th, 2023. Can I ask everyone to please stand for the flag salute?
By the leaders, through the flag of the United States of America, and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Musella.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
McGrath.
McCarthy?
Here.
I'm so sorry. Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
BA Cryan, also in attendance, Township Attorney Michael Avery. The Mayor will be here shortly. He had an incident he had to tend to. And the Municipal Clerk is also present, Council President. We have a quorum. May I begin?
Yes, just if only today. The Mayor should be here. Unfortunately, we had a seven-year-old child struck by a car on Route 202 and was killed. So that's where the Mayor is right now. So we can keep that family in our prayers. Go ahead.
Upcoming meetings, July 23rd, 2024 at 7:00 PM, regular meeting. August 6th, 2024 at 7:00 PM, Agenda Meeting. At this time, I just ask you to review the ordinances on the agenda for second reading, which will be voted on at the next meeting. Okay, seeing that there are no questions, we're going to go ahead. Any questions before I move on? None? Okay. Seeing no questions, we're going to go ahead and move on to the public session. I'd like to entertain a motion to open public session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez.
Here, me, yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Floor is now open to the public. You can speak on any matter. You have five minutes to speak.
Nicholas Homiak from Lake Hiawatha. At the Planning Board meeting last night, Mr. Dillmore encouraged us to start coming here at the council and raising our voices as far as what's taking place. We have a...
We're in a situation where we're trying to force another warehouse into inappropriate location. But one of the situations that developed, we are in Highlands Conformance, and Mr. Inglesino began the Planning Board meeting before the consistency report was complete. That's a no-no. You're not supposed to do that. And the Planning Board should have known it, and at the very least, the Planning Board attorney. But they're acting as if the Highlands now some other agency that is irrelevant to the development plan. So we had three meetings before the consistency report. So when Julia Peterson, who lives in the historic property there, and when she said that this is being fast-tracked, she's right. This is being fast-tracked because it began in May 20th, and the consistency report wasn't completed until June 18th. Now, Mr. Inglesino has a history in the past of not liking or thinking that the Highlands Conformance and regional planning is worth anything because his developers, you know, might have to do the right thing and they might not be allowed to cut a corner here and there. But something should be done about it. And the Mayor, when we had a representative there from the Highlands Coalition, when he brought this to the Board's attention, Mayor Barbario's response was, "Well, why don't you write a letter to the Highlands official?" So we just have a thing where there's no due diligence, and the Board is on dereliction of doing, and in Mr. Inglesino's case, I would say mouth thesis. So that whole thing should be terminated and started over again. When you hear from the developer that the location is inappropriate, and he says it's irrelevant, it's only what the site plan itself in a vacuum, and everything else is irrelevant, very disturbing, very disturbing. So I like that. We need Mr. Spinelli Paul to come here and educate us and this council and the Planning Board and the zoning Board on how we should be behaving, properly behaving, now that we're in Highlands Conformance. We're 100% in the planning area. We have nothing to lose and everything to gain. And his fear of affordable housing has to stop. Parsippany was sued in the past for advocating that the water view is purposely to prevent affordable housing. The Mayor's doing the same thing again. He's doing the same thing again. And I don't know what was preventing another lawsuit. But, you know, scorched earth, oh, they're going to put affordable housing here, so put, you know, put a warehouse or something. It's not going to prevent you from your obligation to affordable housing. But if you stick with the Highlands, like it's been brought to everyone's attention, your numbers will go down because they protect sensitive landscapes. So I'll leave it at that.
Can we, can I say something?
You sure can.
Or should I wait for council comments?
It's up to you, Ms. Hernandez.
Okay. I'd like to ask, Council President, I think I asked in an email before we talked about this last two meetings ago, that we invite Mr. Spinelli from the Highlands Council here to present to us and then be present to ask us, ask questions.
Answer questions?
Yeah, answer questions, yeah.
Okay.
Could we do that at, you know, one of the Agenda Meetings upcoming? He said he would be willing to come, and he's the Executive Director. Would that be okay? I work it out with Coled?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other member from the public wish to speak?
Richard Suarez, Parsippany. I just heard why the Mayor wasn't here. A true tragedy, I might add. With that said, during the last council meeting, the Speaker refused to give her town of residence, saying only off-mic that it didn't matter where she lived. I wonder exactly why an interloper from out of town would be taking such a keen interest in the politics and workings of Parsippany, which has nothing to do with her. That is, unless the young lady has an ulterior motive. Perhaps she was doing it on behalf of an employee or an elected official in town. Perhaps she is a friend of a developer who sees Parsippany as right for the pickings as far as pilots go. Perhaps she is working for a developer's lawyer. I mean, all these options are possible, and only she and whoever she represents knows her true motive. What town taxpayers do not need is someone that parachutes in from out of town telling our residents how they should run their hometown. It doesn't concern her quality of life. The issues in town concern the quality of life of Parsippany residents and not an out-of-towner trying to impose her ideas on the Parsippany taxpayers. During the same meeting, a young lady from town seemed to be very agitated with Councilman Musella. At some point, she flipped him off. The woman in question, the woman also questioned who Dennis Letts is. Mr. Letts is a retired Secret Service agent that received Medals of Valor for his actions during the 1993 and 2001 World Trade Center bombings. A true patriot. Mr. Mayor, for whatever reason, you found the woman's actions toward Councilman Musella to be very humorous, and we're visibly laughing about that. Mr. Mayor, I found your actions to be completely unprofessional regarding your reaction to the incident. If I had gestured the same thing to you during the meeting, I feel certain the officer in the hall would have swung into action at your request. If you are telling me that is now acceptable behavior at council meetings, please let me know. Now, this all goes back to the December pilot meeting that was held at the PAL, a meeting that was so well attended despite being held during the middle of the afternoon. It was clearly visible that the fire code and DCA code requiring a sufficient amount of restrooms for the occupants was in jeopardy. I personally gave a copy of the DCA restroom code to the city fire chief that day and asked him who I needed to show this to. He told me he would give it to the city clerk. Now, why no action was immediately taken to halt the meeting, I have no idea. Because the restroom violation... Now, why action was not immediately taken to halt the meeting because of the restroom violations, I cannot answer. Perhaps we can get an answer tonight. Perhaps the administration was hell-bent on getting the pilots voted on that day, and nothing was going to stand in their way, even if it meant ignoring code violations. What is happening in this town, where the will of a few override the sentiments of the many? Does the Mayor and council not realize they are supposed to be taking the opinions of the residents seriously? Or do they feel we are too dumb to understand exactly what is going on? I lived and grew up in Hudson County. Even the politicians there would blush at what has been going on in Parsippany lately. Mr. Mayor, you actually did make one good point when you said you cannot control who the developers hire as their lawyer. But, Mr. Mayor, you could control who the town hired. You continue to hire a lifelong friend that a vast majority of the residents did not trust and believed was not acting in their best interest. Judging by the 30-year sweetheart pilot deal he worked out for his client while on the city payroll, most residents saw a clear conflict of interest, even if you continued to turn the blind eye to the obvious. Your longtime lawyer friend, who made over $200,000 last year from the city, wasn't doing a good job for the residents of Parsippany. Who has replaced John Inglesino, and are they affiliated in any way? Lastly, what is your office doing to bring companies into the vacant spaces in town? Whatever the plan is, it isn't working, and new improved efforts need to be forthcoming from your administration, which our minority is doing a very poor job in that area. With the amount of highway access we have in town, it should be giving you, Mr. Mayor, a leg up on attracting businesses. Yet all we hear from you are excuses, excuses, excuses. Mr. Cryan, I received the recycling information I needed from a different source, and I agree that what they're doing is the best that they can do right now, given the situation being what it is. And last but not least, I don't know how many times I've asked for this simple request. Can we get a podium here? There are some of us who have medical problems, and just holding these papers for me is very painful. If there was a podium, I could put this stuff on, it'd make life a lot easier. I don't want to have to file an ADA complaint, but trust me, if I have to, I will. Thank you.
Can we get him a podium for future meetings?
Bob Vanezi of Parsippany. My comments are really directed also at, mostly to the Mayor. He's not here, but I'll continue anyhow with the expectation that he'll watch it on the video. So I didn't personally attend the roundtable meeting of local mayors, but I paid attention to the information about the meeting that Mayor Barbario brought up at the last two council meetings. What made the biggest impression on me is that while most of the mayors, including our own, regard payment in lieu of taxes or pilot agreements as necessary evils, the Mayor of East Hanover refuses to play the pilot game at all, and his township is doing just fine without them. In my opinion, the goal of the next mayor roundtable should be an agreement among all the mayors to follow the lead established by East Hanover. All the municipalities in Morris County are experiencing the same problem. There are not enough projects to fill all the land vacancies that currently exist. Developers are using this fact to extort money from the municipalities in the form of overly generous pilots. In effect, they're saying to each mayor that if you don't give me what I want, then I'm going to build elsewhere. Well, what if the mayors banded together at one of these roundtable meetings and agree that none of them would offer pilots? Immediately, the ability of developers to play one mayor against the other would disappear. Of course, the developer could still opt not to build at all, but that option seems unlikely. In order to make money, a developer must build. Municipalities would still be competing for scarce projects, but the competition would be based on which town provides the best business environment rather than which town throws the most money at the developer. An agreement among the mayors not to offer pilots especially makes sense for large-scale residential projects, which are net money losers for a municipality because of the educational costs involved. Who cares if a developer builds his 500 apartment monstrosity at another location because Parsippany won't give them a pilot? We often hear about the threat of a bully's remedy in these situations, but that threat does not really exist. It's been acknowledged several times in this council chamber that there is no legal obligation to offer a pilot, even in situations where affordable housing is involved. So, Mayor Barbario, I would like to know if you would be willing to propose at the next roundtable meeting that all mayors come to an agreement to stop offering pilots. If you don't think this is a good idea, please explain why, and I would also like to hear the thoughts of the council members about this proposal.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. A couple things to the manager. I was on the phone with several of the flood mitigation people, and in order to help out our Parsippany residents here at Lake Hiawatha, we have to get all of the mayors involved. We can call our Assemblyman and Juan Undanda, and he's part of the committee. He's claiming, and so are others.
Mr. Zeno, can you please just speak into the mic?
I'm sorry. They haven't been getting complaints, but the only issue is, like you said, for a couple houses, the Armored Corps of Engineers is not going to exist. Our issue is going to be to go from Mendham to the Passaic. The Rockaway River, that used to be at 6 to 10 feet, is now 6 to 18 inches. The Whippany River is in the same thing. So it all has to be dredged. So I suggest you get ahold of Brian Bergen at his office, give him a call, and then get the rest of the state representatives, because nothing's been done in 50 years. I was fortunately 17 when Route 80 was being built, and now it acts consistently as a dam. Second question, I can turn around and answer Mr. Suarez. Tia's temporary address is mine, 41 Robin Hood Road, Morris Plains, New Jersey. And so I don't have to go away everybody's time. Mr. Horak, I've got to really congratulate you on your creative writing.
You have to, Mr. Fasai, you have to...
I have to congratulate Mr. Horak on his creative writing, because there's 36 pages of his letters to the editor. It's fantastic. But my problem is, you turn around, he's spreading a lot of disinformation. The same thing as Bob over here, is, seems like CNN only given certain snippets, because if he would have stood there for the last few comments of the Mayor of East Hanover, he would have found out that it doesn't work for them, but if he was in Parsippany's situation, he would be having pilots in this town. Now, several council members, maybe I heard something different. I would also like to know how Mr. Letts can get away with assassination charges on a member of our town, and why aren't they recalled? It's in the booklet. Because Justin is afraid of being assassinated. Now, Justin, we've had several faces-to-faces. I've issued you, Angela, it's December 19th, I think it's 19th, possible solutions to your issues, which I haven't heard solutions, although I hear is bitches. Maybe you can, by the next council meeting, supply me any answers in writing? Otherwise, our mayor has brought up, and you've brought up, challenges of corruption, but don't have, and Mr. Horak has brought up, it sounds like in his letters, the same issues, but none of yous have got the guts to take the mayor's challenge and go down with no information to the prosecutor's office. So if he got the mouth, have his proof. And as far as donations with Tia, I have a friend of mine looking up that's in DC. He's got Colonel in front of his name. He was taking and giving donations to Democratic Parties, and I had the proof coming. So he'll be at the next meeting.
Elaine Guevales, I can tell you who that lady from Bergen County is, because when I was at a meeting, I was sitting over there, and she was in front of me, and I was shaking my head, as many people do here, and I was making comments to myself. Well, what she said was that she was friends with Councilman Neglia, that her husband is an attorney, and that I was going to be getting a letter in the mail, that I could not do what I was doing. I don't know, I take that as a threat. So I'm just going to let you know that, and I want to say congratulations to Justin on running for mayor. He's a breath of fresh air. It's like eating Wonder Bread when I was a child, fresh Wonder Bread. So thank you, Justin.
Any other member from the public? You can, Mr. Suarez, if they don't answer, you can speak to them after the meeting.
Seeing no one else, entertain a motion to close the public? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask the council members to please review the consent agenda, which will be voted on at the next meeting. Seeing there's no questions at this time, we're going to go ahead and move to the approval of minutes, just for review. And now, at this point, we're going to go ahead and go on to the presentations and reports. At this time, the Mayor is not present, so we will come back to that if he does appear prior to the end of the meeting. We'll move on to Township Council.
I have a few things, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
I missed last weekend, the last week, or two weeks ago.
Can I ask you to speak into the mic, Ms. Hernandez?
I know, I was told I don't do that well enough. No, I think one's good enough. Okay, so I have, I want to ask about the tree ordinance. The Parsippany Environmental Advisory Committee had been working on that for about a year when we found that the state, with the new state stormwater requirements, that a new, every municipality has to do a new tree ordinance, and I was wondering when that might be hitting our agenda. Do you know Coled by any chance, or is it Councilman Karifi? It's kind of overdue, but that's why I'm wondering.
I'll consult with the Township Attorney, and you and I can, you know, speak about it offline, and we could see what we can do to make that happen.
Yeah, because we've been working with Parks and Forest, she a little bit, and Justin was, and I think they want to be here too, if they have other comments, the Parsippany Environmental...
Mr. Cryan, are you aware of any of this or no?
Councilwoman, I believe that they sent, that Superintendent Jim Walsh sent a draft back to the Environmental Committee. So I think it's ready shortly. I don't know if you guys gave comments or anything.
Yeah, they did. They just wanted, you know, maybe talk a little bit about why it's important and what it means to Parsippany, because it's going to be very different. Okay, that's the one thing. Talking about pilots and housing, I am very concerned about the new affordable housing regs, as everybody is here, especially how it's going to, and how it has pushed high luxury housing with very minimal affordable housing that really misses the whole middle of like teachers and fire people. So I'm wondering, because I think we should be having conversations about what Parsipony is going to do and be looking like with our plans to get some of this done by the end of the year. Are we going to be meeting as a council with the administration and the development lawyers, as has been done in the past, so that we could discuss together how we move forward with this?
Yes, that's how it works.
It does? Okay, do you know when that might be happening?
At this time, I do not.
Okay, because it's, I think we have it like till the end of the year, and so I just was wondering. Okay. What else did I have? I had another thing to mention here. Redevelopment, new housing regs. Maybe that's about it right now. Oh, yes, we did have the Parsipony Green Team person here, Matt Kavanaugh, presenting. Everybody thought, wow, that was great, lots of incentives for financial moving forward. Thank you.
It's not you.
It's a cane, I'm pulling it on my neck. Well, how will we start incorporating Green Team initiatives? Where, how do we begin? He came and gave a presentation. So, Mr. Cryan, can we meet with you? Can we set something up?
Sure.
Okay, okay, great. Just wanted to get all those things.
I'm sorry, I'm out next week, but the following week, we can definitely do something.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member?
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would just like to, you know, obviously say our thoughts and prayers are with the family of that seven-year-old that's a true tragedy. I would just like to commend the township workers that worked on the Fourth of July, July fireworks. I thought the festival was well-attended. It was really hot, but, you know, great job by everybody on, you know, being there, setting up, and I think that, you know, it was a really good event. So that's pretty much all I have to say.
Anyone else from council?
Yes, I have something. Mr. Suarez, you mentioned some things I don't agree with, but you did say something that caught my mind. I believe you spoke about the mayors banding together. Was that you, or was that Mr. Vanezia? Mr. Vanezia? I'm not sure if we're allowed... I'm sorry? I'm not sure what we're allowed to do and not to do. I know when, if a band of mayors come together and come up with a rule that says we're going to ban having pilots, I'm not sure if that would be considered collusion. I would have to defer to the attorney for that. I'm not sure what the rules and regulations...
Yeah, I don't want to say too much on that publicly, but I share that concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to shed a serf's?
No, no.
We can't speak back and forth, and we can't speak... So any other member of council? Okay, moving along to the Township Attorney.
No report this evening, Council President.
Okay, Business Administrator?
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of notes real quickly. I just wanted to mention, I also wanted to thank the township workers for their great job over the Fourth. And also, on days like today, if you, it's unbearably hot for me to even walk outside. It's unbearably hot for me to walk into the bathroom here. It's unbearably hot for me to walk into the bathroom here. I can't even imagine what it's like to be out in the back of a truck all day, picking up garbage and, you know, 100 pounds each time, and it's really a testament to the great workers that we have, and we appreciate them. The water restrictions are in effect. It's odd one day, even the next day. There are nothing new. Been ongoing. Times like these really call for the need to follow that. Farmers Market has been in effect. It's been great. Three to eight on Fridays, please attend. It's a great opportunity to, you know, share fresh produce with your neighbors. The concerts have been going very well. This week, we have Rated R for Rock. That's at 7:30 on Friday. Next week, on Thursday, is the movie Elemental, so there's some great events coming up, and please take advantage of them. The audit is on the agenda for tonight, the accepting and acknowledging the audit, and then reviewing the corrective action plan. It's on your agenda. We have Valerie Dolan from our auditors here tonight. This audit was another continuation of correcting the issues from the past, and that's been the theme since I've been here, that there's been issues, and it's correcting. It's been issues and correcting, and this was generally a very good audit, and I'll let Valerie tell you that herself. There was only four corrective action items to deal with. We've already handled two, and the other two are pretty minor. Valerie, if you don't mind?
Sure thing. Okay, perfect. Yeah, just like I said, it was obviously wonderful to once again do the audit for the township. We were very, the town is very well-prepared for the audit. Can't always say that. From past years, you are completely on a rebound, so where I stood here probably in front of you two years ago with not the greatest of news, coming back now two years after last year, having the rebound year to the second year, where you guys are doing very, very well, and are starting to show strong fiscal management of the funds. The fund balances in all of the operating funds, in the current fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund are all up. They're all on their regenerating balances. They're back to being, starting to get back to those pre-pandemic levels. As we know, we had generated some surpluses this year, which you were able to utilize in that '24 budget that you built, without relying on them, for each of their funds are really holding their own. And the Gulf utility pretty much stayed even, so all utilities and all funds are doing well. You are continuing to see strong fiscal management. There is, like I said, a couple, as the administrator said, there are a few small recommendations. When I look back, a couple of years, there were probably 13, 14, 15 recommendations. We're down to like a small handful of really what I would classify in terms of audit, like merely housekeeping. Two of them, like the administrator said, have already been corrected. One of them is in the area of segregation of duties. It really comes down to your finance office is just missing that one, another body, which I believe has been advertised, so you're working towards that segregation of duties. The other areas will be resolved and have been. And then lastly, we do have a few suggestions to management, which usually are our look forward. We like to put those in the report because they're more important than necessarily, I'm six months behind you to your end, you're living in the future. One of the one areas is obviously there's a new accounting standard, which circles around compensated abscences, so we're going to have to track those a little different, so we will be working with the township to make sure that we're reporting those properly. The other area that's really of our most concern is probably with the insurance fund that you're no longer in. You had been a member of a joint insurance fund, which was Garden State. Garden State Insurance Fund is no longer your provider. You are now with Intergovernmental, so you've already left the fund. That fund is having serious financial difficulties. They are experiencing major financial difficulties, and so what happens is when you're in these joint insurance funds, they reserve the right to go back in pre and assess you for previous years. I feel that's coming. Nothing has been finalized or issued by it, but there is a liability that's potential to the residents of Parsippany that I felt it was in your best interest to be aware that it could happen. With those additional assessments, what they usually do is they look back, and then they give you 10 years to pay that back. So they'll set what you probably owe, and would give you something, some type of payment schedule. Obviously, they won't hit you with their whole. It would be across the board for all members, and it's looked at by each year that you're a member of that fund. There are many towns that are struggling with this fund and are in the same boat as Parsippany, but I felt it was probably the most important piece to bring to you, that there's a potential of a payment that you might have to make. Speaking with the administrator today, you still haven't received anything yet from them, so it's not official yet. It's just my auditor knowing I audit insurance funds. It's a potential, and it would be in my best interest to let you know that there is a potential.
How much is that potential?
Well, their losses are tapping up at over 11 to 14 million. They are in serious. They started out at, they were, we were watching them, they just had about $13,000. Then last year, the '22, they were at $5 million, and what I'm hearing, I haven't seen their final audit issued, is they actually sustained an $11 million loss in '23. So that's a large sizable loss, and so we don't know what that'll bring, but.
We recommended last year, and this council voted to leave that chip and enter to a new chip, so we took corrective action on that one before we were actually fully aware of how bad the issues were, but the writing was on the wall.
The writing was on the wall, and you are no longer in that fund, but you do, they do reserve the right to come back and look at those, all the, which is what I'm guessing they're doing, is they are evaluating every one of their fund years and seeing where the problems are and will assess.
And would the Intergovernmental Governmental Fund that we're in now cover us, or we'd have to pay?
No, that would be back to those claims, and a lot of it stemmed from COVID claims. That's the really issue with these, a lot of these insurance funds struggled with the pandemic and all of that, like those claims that came through, all the workers' comp claims. There was a lot that happened to towns, and the towns have stabilized themselves to the pandemic, and these insurance funds are now struggling to feel that repercussion on those. Like I said, we're, it would be in your due diligence to stay on top of it. As no longer a member of the fund, you're not getting as much information, because you're not a member. The existing members have board meetings and are aware of it. No longer being a member of the fund, I felt it was best to let you know, and like I said, the administrator and I have talked several times about this issue as a potential for the township. But other than that, I think you are doing great. These are, there's a few corrective action plans, so tonight you'll have to approve, not only accepting the audit, but also that corrective action plan. Does anybody have any questions? I would love to answer anything that anyone might have. Okay, perfect. If anything comes up, I'm always available to discuss. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Okay, I have, I have no report. Moving along to ordinances first reading, I'd like to ask the council to please briefly review, as they will be voted on at the next meeting. Do we have any questions? Okay. Seeing that there are no questions, we're going to go ahead and move on to the non-consent agenda. R 2024-111 Corrective Action Plan for 2023 Audit, can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
At this time, also as well, Mr. Musella, the form that I've issued, if you can sign in. Awesome, thank you very much. Moving along to R 2024-112, to approve the corrective action plan, 2023 municipal audit. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, moving along, motion passes. Moving along to R 2024-113, the Township Council Certification of the Annual Audit. Motion to approve the resolution above. May I please get a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. R 2024-114, Amending a Resolution, R 2024-102 of the Township Council, the Township Parsippany Troy Hills, Authorizing the Award of a Contract to P.M. Construction Corporation for Putting Stone Heights Road Reconstruction Program Phase II and Sanitary Sewer Improvements. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-115, Authorizing an Ambulance Coverage Agreement with Flood Viking Football Incorporated. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-116, Authorizing Litigation Against a Developer of Glenmont Commons. Can I please have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Abstain.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Four yes votes, one abstention, motion passes. Moving along to applications for licenses and permits, seeing none, moving along to approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Leonard Ho recommends authorization for payment. One, authorizes payment of the July 3, 2024, regular and miscellaneous payroll estimated at $1,750,000. And number two, payment of bills from voucher list of 7/1/24 through 7/3/24 totaling $3,915, Motion to approve the authorization for payment.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Could I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?